Do we have any other members in the audience that would like to see the budget? Do we have any members in the audience that would like to come forward to see your communication period? Since we have none, that's enough information for you. Next item, item number one.
Next item is item four, actuary approval, four point zero one, see the legislative update.
Madam Chair, Madam President, Madam Board, good evening. I'm James Fairfield, Commonwealth Strategy Group. We're going to give you a legislative update today of some select bills. Ms. Seibert is going to give you an update on the budget, which House and Senate amendments came out yesterday. And then we're happy to entertain any questions the board might have. So as some of you may know, we are one day away from crossover, which is the official midpoint of the General Assembly session. So we're sort of on the downward slope here. I want to talk specifically about three categories of bills that we've seen down at the General Assembly that have caused quite a bit of controversy, at least two have. The first category deals with long-term suspension. The second category deals with suspension and expulsion of younger students. Then the third category, which really isn't controversial, deals with the Department of Education propagating guidelines for both long-term suspension and expulsion. So the first two bills I want to talk about deal with long-term suspension. They are slightly different. The first is House Bill fifteen thirty-four, patron by Delegate Dicky Bell. The first thing this bill does is define long-term suspension as any suspension between eleven and ninety days. So that is quite a change from current statute. The second thing the bill does is that it dictates that long-term suspension may not extend past forty-five days unless certain steps are made. There's been a lot of opposition to this bill from the Superintendent's Association, the BEA, the school boards. They are all still a work in progress. Delegate Bell's bill has passed the House of Delegates and is going to be on its way over to the Senate for consideration. It is substantially similar to the next bill, which is patroned by Senator Stanley. There are some differences, though. Senator Stanley's bill actually defines a long-term suspension as anything up to sixty days and prohibits any extension past sixty days unless certain conditions are met. And then also requires a review of that suspension at the end of each grading period. I know that Senator Stanley continues to work with stakeholders like the superintendents, the school boards, and the BEA to craft the legislation a little bit more to their liking. That also passed the Senate today, actually, and is over, on its way to the House of Delegates. The next bill is House Bill fifteen thirty-six, deals with student discipline, again by Delegate Bell. Originally, it would have prohibited the expulsion of students in pre-K through five, except for certain offenses. That has been changed to pre-K through three. And that bill is also on its way over out of the House of Delegates into the Senate. It is substantially similar to Senator, again, Stanley's bill, Senate Bill nine nine seven, which also prohibits the expulsion of students pre-K and three unless certain requirements are made, specifically certain violations of the code that deal with drug offenses and weapons offenses generally. The next two bills deal with the Department of Education establishing guidelines for alternatives to short-term and long-term suspension, consideration by local schools. These are patroned by Lamont Bagby, Delegate Lamont Bagby, House Bill nineteen twenty-four, and Senate Bill eight twenty-nine, which is patroned by Senator Jennifer Wexton. You should have received today an updated copy of the bill list that we prioritized and categorized for you so you can see the bills that we listed as priority bills and the dates they've had at the General Assembly thus far. Unless you guys have any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Seibert for a budget update.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Ms. Cosby?
I'm sorry, Chair. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so with the Department of Education and setting up guidelines for alternatives to long-term suspension?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that include any discussion of additional funding?
I'm going to say no, but I don't know that for sure.
You're going to say yes, you say yes?
I was going to say, I want to be truthful with you. I'm going to say no, but in reality, I don't know. Guidelines generally aren't tied to funding. Guidelines are things that you can use, if you choose, to sort of dictate how you respond to either alternatives to long-term suspension or expulsion. So, they're permissive.
Good evening. As James said, my name is Amy Seibert, and I'm also part of the Commonwealth Strategy Team, and thought I'd give you a little update on the budget. Yesterday, the House and Senate made their amendments to the Governor's introduced budget. And for public education, they're not too substantially different, except for a few ways. The best news is there was no reduction across the board in either budget for direct aid to public education. So all the money that was in the budget for rich and public schools that the Governor put forward is the same in both sides. So there has been no reductions to direct aid, which is great news. The House bill, the House budget, what they did was they actually also redirected money that was in the interest budget, about fifty-five million dollars, for one-time teacher bonuses. And then they added six point one million dollars, and they're going to allow schools to use that in any way they'd like. So they're actually going to change that to the lottery-per-people allocation, the PPA, as opposed to designating it to be for teacher raises. So all that money will be available, and they're providing those localities flexibility on how they use that funding. They could use it for teacher raises, they could also use it for other items that are allowed currently under the same category. In the Senate, they actually use that same money, and they're actually increasing the Governor's one point five salary raise to two, a two percent salary raise, but the money is designated for raises. So same amount of money essentially to do a raise, but it has to be a raise. Now, there's some flexibility for localities on when they give that raise. It can be either this school year, twenty seventeen, or in the twenty eighteen school year. However, that is just for raises, so there is less flexibility with those funds. As far as the teacher residency program, which I know is an important issue to RPS, the Governor had added a million dollars to the current line out of the five hundred thousand dollars. The House has removed that from their proposed budget. That one million dollars remains the current status of five hundred thousand. The Senate left that money in, so they left a million dollars the Governor had put in, so their number is one point five. So there'll be opportunities when the budget comes together for conference to try to make sure that there is an increase in the teacher residency program. If you so direct us to work on that, we will do that. So those are sort of the main highlights of the budget. Just wanted to kind of touch those for you. If you have more questions, I'm happy to answer them, but those are sort of the biggest highlights. Public education was actually a pretty small part of the budget this year because they really tried to do no harm to public education. So besides the increases in salaries, the differences there, which will be worked out. And so for you all to know, what happens is the House passes their budget, the Senate passes theirs, and then what'll happen is they'll go into a conference committee where there'll be six members from each side of the House and Senate who will work out the differences in the budget. So there'll be another timeframe from now, really, at the end of this week, toward the end of session, where there'll be lots of conferences between the House and Senate to try to match up the budgets on each side. So there's still some time to have influence where necessary, so we will take questions from you all on that. If you have any questions, I'd have to answer them.
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for you. So, and you say we can still have some influence. So what can we do in order to ensure or to lobby, advocate for the additional money for teacher salaries and the residency program?
Sure, so if you're happy on your behalf to go meet with the legislators on either side, meaning that in this situation, what we would do is talk to, I'll take the teacher residency program, for example. Because the House removed that money, we would talk to the House Congresses about the importance of putting it back in. We would also work with the Senate members of the conference committee to have them hold the line to ensure that money stays in the budget. So we would work with both sides of those folks, the six House members and the six Senate members, to try to get that money back in.
Okay, I guess let me be a little more specific. So when do we need to show up en masse and tell people, you know, hey, we really want to forward? Or is the time for that bad?
Well, it's a little complicated, really, because there isn't sort of an en masse time to come. All the negotiations for the conference reports are in small groups. However, we can certainly have you guys email, call, and if you want to come down and do individual meetings with legislators, we are happy to do that. So there isn't sort of an en masse time to do that, but if folks think that's important, it's certainly something we can help you, give you the right legislators to send emails and make phone calls for to help influence that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes our update, unless the board has questions. All right.
Be in contact.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item.
Lieutenant Lieutenant John Martin, the next item is four point zero two, receive revisions to policy one dash one point five to your procedures and standards of conduct.
Good evening, board members. I think that's better. Good evening, again. There are copies of the policy revisions summary and policy that is up for your first reconsideration tonight that were just given out to you. And so basically, this is, again, the first read of policy one dash one point five. And this is school board procedures and standards of conduct. And you will recall that we were working, and Mr. Barlow was working, we were working together to make sure that all of your wishes were captured in the policy revisions of this particular policy at this time. So very, very briefly, there was a policy change to address social media as far as reminding board members when communicating in a public forum, including social media, and set forth the parameters of appropriate communication in that. This next policy revision at item four was just to enumerate that your policy roles, that your primary roles, excuse me, are outlined in the Code of Virginia, rather than single out one particular role as to making policy. So just basically taking that more broadly as to what your roles are as listed in the Code of Virginia. On item seven, on page two, it gives flexibility in the use of electronic devices in executive sessions to extend to uses that are in permanent matters addressed in the executive session, of course, consistent with the provisions of the policy related to confidentiality. And finally, on the page, on page three of the policy, to add a gross negligence standard with your deliberate standard that is listed as, when a board member violates or believes that another board member has violated, you can have a deliberate violation or a violation that is as a result of just a conscious disregard for the need to use reasonable care in that instance. And that could trigger the violation, the procedure for addressing violations in this policy. This is the first read of the policy, and if there are any questions or comments to that, you can certainly provide those to me. I would like to give out dates, so that if you have any questions or concerns about the policy, if you give them to me by February the seventeenth, that will give us time, if they're not substantive, to incorporate them, if any, into the second redraft for your consideration on February the twenty-first. So you will be in a position to vote on this with any changes on February twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leving. Next item?
Next item is four point zero three, receiving request to lease the Real School.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and the rest of the board. The Real School is located at Azalea and Chamberlain Avenue. It sits on approximately two and a half acres of land. It's about a fifteen thousand square foot facility. It was basically closed by the school system more than ten years ago. When the Facility's Task Force developed the Facility Needs Report, the Task Force saw no need for the school system to have that particular asset and that it just didn't fit with the needs were of the district. The asset, when it was closed, got into disrepair. Today, on a very preliminary estimate, we estimate it would take at least an investment of a half million dollars to reopen that facility, and that's probably below that. We've had an individual, Kenneth Williams, with the Adult Alternative Programming, who has developed a program to address students that did not graduate from high school between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five, that his program will be geared for developing a program to educate those individuals to get their degrees, their high school diploma, and then give them a trade. His relationship, his partnership coming with the construction industry. It's a program that is going, for example, partner with licensed contractors. Students then will go out and work on senior homes. They may even develop relationships and programs that they'll help us within the schools. Those are some of the details we'll need to work out because of the laws that we have to follow with background checks and so forth inside of our buildings. But our recommendation to you as a board is to approve tonight a four-year lease to the Adult Alternative Programming. The first year, there'd be no rent, they'd pick up all the operating costs on day one. That would give them time to put the dollars in that's going to be needed to renovate the building, to get it up and running. We believe, and talking to Kenneth and his group, that it'll take about six months to do that before we'll start seeing the first students going into the building. Then that'll give them six months to get settled. Then in years two through four, they will pay five hundred dollars per month, or six thousand dollars a year. And then at the end of four years, we have a chance to reevaluate the program and see where the pluses, the minuses, and the dollar amounts of value are coming from to determine, do we continue the program? And if so, what the appropriate rental rate would be at that point in time.
Any final questions? Mr. Krantz, do we have anyone here from the group?
Yes, Kenneth is here.
As well?
Then, I'm here for questions. Let me share this. We've been in existence for eight years. We've been certified by the RAS as a community charity for four years, since December two thousand twelve. You know, we provide skill sets and faith-based teaching and behavior modification to at-risk youth between the ages of sixteen and thirty. And thirty is significant because we find a lot of young youth who made bad decisions. You know, got involved, they got in trouble, and they're getting out of trouble. You know, so they're getting out a little later in the age of twenty-five. So we extended it from sixteen to thirty. Now, we are in collaboration now with the Department of Community Justice Services, and we are becoming to you real soon, department. And I was at the legislation, at the finance committee last week at Holton Avenue. And I was wondering why the school board, you know, doesn't step outside the box. And I'm saying that to say that, as community charity, you know, we serve the community. And our primary focus in the Adult Alternative Program is children. You know, and like, I know Dr. Beck was saying that the athletic facilities were in need of repair. They need to find the funds to repair it. But it's come to forty-nine, twenty-nine Chamberlain Avenue, knocking on the door, unless it's what you need. Because all of our training, all the painting, all the repairs that we do as a part of our equipment, you know, every time a student paints, he's learning a skill. You know, and in addition to that, you know, seniors, we call them, you know, we have one hundred numbers for seniors. If, for example, Tree Lamb goes through the roof, and the senior is on fixed income, she would call the Real School building, and we would send out a carpenter and three students, and we would repair that at Holton Avenue for free. The same thing with Wendy Warriors. If you have a Wendy Warrior living next to you, and you see his family struggling, get him up and down the steps, you'll call us, and we'll send out a carpenter, three students, and we will construct a handicap for him. Now, Home Depot is partnered with us. We've gotten letters from Senator Kane, who has requested specifically that all elected officials take a look at this program. We had a founding discussion with him, government called it, mayors told me, you know, everybody was on board. The only thing we were missing is a building lodging. And we had a building, but we didn't have the capacity, you know, because right now, today, we have over two hundred and thirty minute room corrections. You know, we get calls every day, you know, people are struggling there. You know, so we are the beacon of light, you know, that shines for them. You know, so they're waiting, we're waiting. And in addition to our equipment being constructed, you know, we're going into a building that's in need of half a million dollars worth of work. I mean, your building. And we're going, we're saying, look, let us go into your building. We don't want to pay and rent the first year, but in return, after that first year, that one million dollar building will be worth two million dollars, and it's still yours. And the repairs, and the work, all the material that Home Depot and the donors provide is going into that building. You know, so I would hate to think that we'll walk away from that building after four years, you know, and, you know, and no longer there after the accomplishments we made. And I'm sure we will. But it's imperative that we get opportunities to change lives. We also partner with Mr. Rapsducky at RIAHA, and we'll be training students to prepare them for section three. And that's going to pop off. We've already started, we've been beating them for maybe over a month. So we're looking for great things to come out of this bill, as opposed to one thing about it, it serves, it's better with us in than not. You know, and we will be sure that the, like I say, we reach with the school board, but we're looking to get the parents involved. And we want to take that fifteen-year-old student that's sitting in the fight with a classroom full of twelve-year-olds. We want to create a curriculum in the Real School, and we can have them together, you know. And not only that, more importantly, the students who are, pick up these criminal charges, they're suspended. You know, he may be suspended for three months, go to court, and fail not guilty. What happened to the whole, Mr. August? So we're saying, look, when you're suspended from school, we need to create a curriculum. And when you come here, and as opposed to being suspended and detached from the school, then the school can see that your values, you know, that's definitely needed. They just allow them to come to the Real School, and they'll still be a part of our school, but suspended to be alternative, which will be us. And, I don't know. So we're hoping and always praying that you say yes and allow us to change lives in this city. I'm open for questions.
I'm talking to Ms. Young and Ms. Carter. Now, I just wanted to be clear, it's a best-in-the-program, this is the first I've heard of it. Is this an ex-offender program, or is this an educational program?
Well, we initially started out as a reentry program. Especially, you know, we are of the opinion that once we get that father in his right place, that's the place for God, or the community, everything else is fall of the place. But then we get in a lot of talks with women. You know, then we talked to Matt and Teller, GOC, they're saying they're ready to open another women's prison. So then we, that's the dentum, where we have a woman-to-woman program. So our woman-to-woman program, women, empowering women, you know, women who have lost loved ones to homicide, who have lost children to homicide, who have been battered, who have been prostituting themselves, no self-esteem. We actually have a bachelor show scheduled for May at forty-nine, twenty-nine Chamberlain Avenue. We're going to have women there fixing hair, bachelor shows, and children, and it's just...
Such a variety of services, including ex-offender, inner-educational, it sounds like mentoring and support. It's just a variety of services. I'm trying to understand what type of activities we need.
Well, we primarily, we, I'm a class A contractor. I've been doing this for thirty years, you know. We started out doing primarily construction trades, you know, and we did that because Bell's Valley. I was comfortable there because that's what I knew. You know, but now, since we're at that time, we've had others to come onboard, volunteering, you know, to do other things. We decided that we'd be going to places like, we got some students come, everybody's interested in construction. You know, so we have some students that have come to register, and they're saying, well, look, I want to do auto mechanics, man. So we're going to, we have a point of schedule now. We're going to Richmond Ford, and we're going to ask Richmond Ford to open a mechanic shop and allow our students to come in there for a period of six months.
So it is a five oh one C B, five oh one C B status?
Yes, Senator, I'm trying to help him out. I'm doing a program of the work, and I'm trying to help him get started. To answer your question about education, this really is teaching people building programs. And one reason he got involved in this is because he's got a lot of subcontractors who can't get enough subcontractors to do the work. And so this will allow contractors who will help you to have employees who do work and also help people who are in unfortunate lives to try and train them. People who can do work, all the work in that area.
It's very helpful, and it has its five oh one C B status?
Yes.
And has a board?
Yes.
And is registered?
Yes.
And is it a website? It's part of a website?
I agree, you're correct. That's the program, adult attended program dot com.
And you had some grants given, once it gets to school.
Yeah, I actually have a grant on the table, but you didn't see that for dinner.
So that was the next question. How do you anticipate funding the five hundred thousand, that's a pretty significant figure?
Well, five hundred thousand, one thing, like Senator Henry March, on his way out of office, he submitted a bill to the Senate, it's called Senate Bill number sixty-eight. Under Senate Bill number sixty-eight, non-markets such as ours are privy to these properties, houses. You know, so initially, the houses were a dollar, but now they're one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. But that's nothing to an hour. So we have thirty houses on this right today in the City Attorney's Office. And what we do, we take these houses, we take twelve of them at a time, and we go and rehab these houses and use that as a basis for training at the same time. And once we complete these houses, the proceeds go over to the program. Now, our only criteria, as far as the citizens concerned, is to make these houses available to those marked as defendants. And that's where the actual proceeds are.
The one thing, the workers won't cost any, you know, they will have to pay for the supplies. But just, hopefully, as they build it up, and these people get out and get these houses, he will have the money. He'll have to start a little bit slower than maybe he thinks he should start, and I've told him that.
It's a great concept, I'm just trying to understand the long term, how we could...
Yeah, it's really well.
And as they, as they go out and work on the house, they end up making, having money available to the next house. Because they can sell the houses for a lot more than what they could have. And this should help, it's going to cost a lot, because they are people who are learning, and they're students.
Ms. Young and Ms. Moore.
Mr. Williams, first and foremost, I concur with your assessment as it relates to your challenge to this board and to RPS to think outside the box. Second, my, in my only real inquiry regards, what kind of dialogue or consultation have you engaged in with the neighbors specifically? Can you speak to if neighbors are supportive of this? If you've had an opportunity to converse with persons who reside in near proximity to this, to this location? And are you prepared to provide some kind of synopsis as it relates to if they're supportive? If they're not supportive, why they want to be supportive? And allow me to, I'm sorry, I'm actually going to ask you a second question, if you have any. Because of the way that you addressed Ms. Marsh Carter's question, and it does include persons who in the past Because of the way that you addressed, um, Ms. Marsh Carter's question, and it does include, um, persons who in the past got into trouble, is there a need to address ingress egress at the facility? And if there is, perhaps there's not, so I don't want to make any assumptions. But if there is a need to address that, uh, can you speak to what kind of consideration has been given to them? So one, what kind of dialogue or consultation has materialized pertinent to neighbors? And, and then second, if there's a need, and again, I'm not making an assumption that there is, if there's a need to control any ingress egress at the facility and/or any other related concerns, have they been considered? Thank you.
Let me answer that because I've been to the facility several times. The, uh, this, you may not be familiar with the real school, it's, it's on Isaiah Avenue. One, one side has a park, but the other side has Chamber Avenue and the third side is Isaiah Avenue. It's right on the corner. It has a fence completely around it and it's self-contained. I'm not sure what kind of neighbors are, I didn't even look, but I think they're probably apartments at this, uh, Chamber Avenue. And I don't believe he's had any discussions with neighbors because I don't think the neighbors would really be affected. He would be in the building, they would all be in the building, and these, whoever's there would not be able to go into the neighborhood because of the offensive and exclusive building.
Thank you, I think that's sufficiently addressed my questions, thank you, sir.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Um, Mr. Williams, I, you and I've had some conversations about this and, and I support the concept. And, um, I think as a general matter, I think the, the school board would support trying to help those disengaged youth and people, trying to get them some skills. Um, what I might suggest is, um, unless everyone's ready to take action on this, is that you take some time to meet with them individually, uh, because I think your passion and your, um, effectiveness as a, as an advocate for this program comes through, um, very, very clearly, um, when it's one-on-one. Um, and so, um, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but, um, that might be an option, um, if, if, unless we're all ready to, to vote. I, I've had, and, and I will admit, Mr. Williams has, has, um, been working on this since before the new board was seated and has talked to, I know, the previous board, at least several members of, uh, in more in depth. So, um, that's, that's the premise of my statement and question, so.
I, I would just mention that, uh, as you said, he's very into this, he's a total athlete for it. He's willing to spend a lot of his time, has even assets to get this started. And I've been involved in it, uh, trying to help him out for about six months. I did this through the Greater Richard Bar Foundation. But, uh, the, uh, I, I, I really, uh, just, to me, I, I don't believe there's any downside. The building has been sitting there for seven or eight, nine, ten years, and it's never been used. It's just sitting there and it's, and it's actually deteriorating. The longer we wait, the more it's going to deteriorate. And, and it's, and it's not going to ever be used for anything. As a matter of fact, the school board tried to give it back to the city and, uh, they never did anything with it. So I, to me, it's the, uh, I don't see how, if there's any, any downside from the school board or the city's standpoint. I mean, if it doesn't work out, I, I think it will, but if it doesn't work out, uh, they probably have, they'll have a building that's a little bit better off because he will at least do part of what he's done and, uh, you know, I would just suggest to go ahead with it.
Doctor Sabini, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
I do.
You say, you go.
Yes.
Doctor Sabini and Ms. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your efforts. Uh, my question is really, um, what's your current capacity and what's your potential capacity for the number of individuals?
For the students?
Right.
Uh, well, as, as of today, um, like I said, we have over two hundred and thirty, two hundred, over thirty, over two hundred and thirty students registered. You know, and, um, we're in, in the process of partnering with RIAHA, you know, who's going to be, uh, paying us one thousand dollars per student, you know, just to prepare them for section three. Um, we, uh, we, uh, we have grants coming, one grant already been, already been approved, you know, from Chief Alfred Durn, and we're supposed to be meeting with him on the twenty-third to do a walkthrough of the building, so I can show you what the layout is. Uh, we have other, it's not just adult alternative program, we have alternative programs that's going to be there. Pastor Wallace Winfrey, he's mentoring, uh, both of the students over in Southside Hillside Court. And he's also, um, uh, educated in behavior modification and balance, um, dealing with balance, you know, in, in students and youth. So, um, we have, um, uh, teacher volunteers, we have students, we have contractors, we have eight contractors who have volunteered, just do it freely, you know, and, and, um, I found out that, uh, I, I found out, not recently, I found out in the, in the course of doing the, the construction trades, you know, and a lot of people are not, not aware of this, but it doesn't take a whole lot of training, you know, to qualify to get a Class C certification as a Class C contractor. And that is our primary goal, to create entrepreneurs. You know, I mean, you know, being employable is one thing, but when you, you know, when you got your own and you're able to run your own business, that's something totally different. You know, and a Class C contractor in the state of Virginia, right here, can legally make up to ten thousand dollars per job. You know, we go around to local churches, we share all the time, you know, keep your hustle, change your product. You know, a ten thousand dollar job, just go out and get you ten jobs a month, or ten jobs a year, you know, so.
I, I understand your concern. He's got two hundred people that want to get in this program.
Yeah.
And I don't think he's going to be able to keep all two hundred of them busy first, I think it's going to take time. But until he gets a building, he's not going to be able to really get into this, this program as much. It's, we're going to have to wait a little bit longer.
Ms. Carter, so I'm just, just to recap, this is a recommendation of Mr. Krantz, right? So I'm assuming that the proper lease, including the requisite liability insurance and everything would be put in place?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, and just to protect the school system, and it sounds like you're saying you have the, the workers and the volunteers that can make the building safe and have, have it, okay.
And we will make certain that any and all work there is done in accordance with city regulations.
And that's...
It also protects the school board because it's an asset still, and I know this is not technically owned by, but it's still controlled by the school system.
Right.
So we will ensure that any and all work there is done in accordance with city regulations, that the building's maintained in accordance with the city regulations. We also will ensure that any problems with neighbors, which I don't believe will be an issue, but we will ensure there's plenty of parking there on site today, that they continue to operate in a manner that is conducive to the neighbors. Right now, today is just a vacant building. It, it hasn't attracted anybody on the inside, but it's not set up to add any value going this particular route. We take all the operating costs that the district's paying today. You know, we're paying the electrical, we're paying for water, those kind of things. They get picked up by Mr. Williams under the terms of the lease. We've seen through his, um, relationship with the contractors, we, we opened it up for a tour. There was approximately fifty contractors that came.
Wow.
Um, he's got a lot of support within the contracting community for this particular project. It's an asset that just doesn't fit because of its size and its location for the district today, um, plus the investment that it would take to bring that up to speed, to put something there. It has approximately seven classrooms and it has an office space. So it's limited in what that building could be used for from a school perspective. And as Mr. Williams said, anything that he does in this particular building is an investment to RPS and that if for some reason his program, um, faces some, some hurdles and he can't overcome those hurdles, um, or he gets so big that he needs to go to a facility bigger than what Real School can provide, at least then we'll have an asset that, that will have been brought up to code and, and will increase the value for that particular, uh, asset.
Ms., Mr. Young?
Mr. Krantz, if Mr. Williams, should God forbid, uh, God forbid be unsuccessful as it relates to securing the capital investment in the facility, is there any, is there any kind of, are there plural, any kind of terms in the lease, proposed lease, that would require a significant sum of money to be invested, uh, before terms that lease are, before the terms of that lease recognize that they're not being honored? In other words, when, when do some monies have to be invested in and what, what's the, what's the dollar figure?
In year, the facility is basically a two-tier structure. The top tier he'll have to have completed within the first year of operation. Um, if he doesn't have it completed, then that would be, um, a potential default that he would have a remedy to, to do, to get it up to speed. But I've talked to the police department, they have, um, given, awarded him a grant. Um, I've seen the contractors and I can't sit here and tell you with a hundred percent certainty that this thing's going to work, but I went into this with a, with a skeptic eye when we first began the conversation. And after working with Mr. Williams and seeing what's there, I think that this has a very good chance of being successful. But he'll have to do it in that, up on that first level of the property in the first year.
Madam Chairwoman, that's good enough for me. Mr. Krantz says that?
Mr. Krantz, I have a question, well, Ms. Owen, then I have a question.
And Mr. Moore. All I got to say is I'm all about kids, these are big kids, but there's no downside. If what you do helps ten kids and costs us nothing, I think that sounds fair.
Mr. Moore.
No, I, I'm answering my question.
Um, Mr. Williams, um, just for clarification, the age ranges again are...
Well, we just, just to face, the, the adults are, of course, we have, we have, you could bet it wasn't dentum to have a little, those days about sixteen to thirty.
Okay.
Like I said, we, we, we are looking at, you know, time to ponder because our personal concerns, you know, they need to be in hand here, you know, with the, uh, the students who are overage, you know, in practice with...
And, and, yeah, that's, that's what I was going to ask is, are, are we separating the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old from the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-nine, thirty, okay?
We have, um, twenty, we have five nights, two hours a night.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Krantz?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this information. I too support the concept, but from a his, from a historical perspective, the real school buil, the building itself has been on the books for how many years?
I want to say it's right at thirty to thirty-five.
It came, came in on, I had that question, and probably back to the sixties.
So I guess my question, the length of time that it has not been in use, the school system has been carrying the cost?
If I'm not mistaken, it was, the school board voted to surplus that, I think in two thousand and eight. Um, the city never did accept, formally accept that surplusing, so it has remained on the school system's books. Um, and Mr. Williams first went to the city to inquire about this transaction and the city advised Mr. Williams that, you know, he needed to come through the school system as well.
Okay. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Chairwoman Page, I just have a comment, not a question. I am in support of this, I just think that, uh, I know that the age group that you want to serve, eighteen through twenty-five, represents the largest growing segment of poverty enrichment today. And so if we can find some way to, uh, create, uh, what I'm going to consider a pilot program where people have a chance of sustainable income, um, at really minimal risk to RPS, I am in full support of that.
Do you need a motion?
I move that we accept this recommendation. I move that we approve the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to enter into a lease with the Adult Alternative Program Incorporated for four years.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Mr. Barlow, any discussion?
The motion is made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Barlow, to approve the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to enter into a four-year lease with the Adult Alternative Program Incorporated for four years, Ms. Dole? I'm sorry, it should also say for the real school property, is that acceptable, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
And Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion again is to approve the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to enter into the lease with the Adult Alternative Program Incorporated for four years of the real school property, Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Doctor Sabini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passed, you guys?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
The next item is item four hundred and zero four, receive report on government's training and from board members attending the SBA conference in January and the board members on the board's compact.
For the government's training, board members, we attended Virginia School Board Association Government's Training at the Marriott Hotel. The first session dealt with the budget, the budget priorities, how we can advocate for our school district. And also they provided information regarding some of the challenges facing during this session for the general assembly and some of the challenges that Richmond, that we are facing, it's really not unique to Richmond. Our surrounding localities, localities throughout the state are facing some of the same issues as it pertains to state funding. We have not received adequate funded, funding as it relates to the rate of inflation. So it was very informative. And then the second day provided training for the chairman and vice chair of the school board and orientation for school board members. If any other members would like to add on in comments?
Ms. Owen?
Well, it was a very, um, it was, it was professional development. And some of it, like all professional development, was more interesting than others. I think that the, the, um, dealing with the media was probably the most hands-on and therefore the most, um, valuable one. Um, there was a lot about budget basics and, and not just the state's budget, but what we're doing now and talking about the, the state is supposed, uh, standards of quality at a minimum level. And of course, we don't want minimum quality, we want maximum. And so that's the responsibility of the locality. So that's pretty much what I would add to what Ms. Page has to say.
And for those of you who are not familiar with the Virginia School Board Association, that is our governing body. So, um, yes, I will diddle, it was our professional development. So we have an update on the compact.
Did the hard copy go out? So I don't want to read the whole summary, the compact summary, but I will say that representatives from the Richmond Public School Board, the school administration, the Richmond City Council, and the mayor's office have been working along with the city chief administrative officer to institutionalize the mayor's compact, which is really an agreement or a partnership so that all of the parties I just mentioned can come together and make sure that the budgeting process is less, more conducive to a great outcome for the public school system. We are currently in the process and have initially drafted a compact that's being prepared through a shared offer, effort of all of these parties. It really reflects our commitment to develop and execute, not just develop, but execute a shared funding strategy that meets the needs of the students while also responding to the needs of our community. We envision this being an engagement not only of the school administration and the city leadership, but the philanthropic community, business community, faith community, and all partners coming together to recognize that when we invest in children, we invest in a stronger future. Liz Dore and I have been, I had the opportunity to represent the school board in this process. City council member, vice chair, I should say, Cynthia Newbill and Michael Jones are representing the school board. Dr. Feden, Ms. Hunter, again, Selena Cuffey-Glynn, and Dan Williamson have all been a part, really driving this idea of coming together, creating a compact so that we have a shared vision, but not only a shared vision, that we have shared goals, we have clear matrix in it, and action plan to address the needs of the public schools. As a part of this drafting process, we have decided that if we had an additional extension of time to really dive into the budget, we would come up with a more clear shared vision between the school system and the, the city council. So we are requested an extension of time to review the proposed budget, including the statement of needs, so that we can bring in the input of all parties and again, come together with a focus on how we can best ensure the outcomes that our students need and have the funding that most strategically supports those needs. So we anticipate a preliminary draft, not officially a committee, we are really a team working together to advance the, the needs, the statement of needs, the needs of our kids, and the needs of our whole community. And the beauty of this compact I'll share with the committee is that it's not just about schools, but it also shares a vision for improving the poverty challenges that face our young people, and again, children as a whole community. So I'll pause there, and Liz, if you wanted to add anything.
I think, I think you did a great job covering it. I guess what I'd say to the, the fellow members of the board is, one thing that would be helpful for Nadine and I as we continue the discussions within the compact is just to get, as we continue our work session tonight, is just to get your feedback on what our collective goals are for what we want to accomplish as a board via the meetings of the compact, and that especially in the next two weeks, given that we have a limited amount of time. And then second, part of the, the discussions within the compact for the next couple of weeks will probably surround us going into a little bit of a deeper detail with our city council on the statement of needs and the budget at large. And so to what extent you all are comfortable with us having those discussions with city council, particularly as they pertain to sharing resources between city council and school board.
I just want to share that I'm really excited, and I think that this constitutes
a departure from past practices, and I'm really excited about it. The fact that we have the mayor, we have the city council and a school board that are prepared to roll their sleeves and work in a collaborative way irrespective of our particular portfolios or sandbox, I think is, sends a very powerful signal. And I recognize that what we did this evening, or what Nadine first spoke to, arguably constitutes process, and process isn't per se sexy, it nonetheless is really important. And the fact that two of our colleagues spent, spent the time to do that with their counterparts on city council and in collaboration with the mayor is really awesome. And I would, at the risk of getting ahead of ourselves, my answer is yes, I absolutely, I, I think that, I know I'm prepared to support what the two of you are doing on that compact committee to identify ways that we can achieve efficiency by working with the city of Richmond. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may add, I think that, thank you Jonathan for saying that, and it's really not just about process, but I think it's about building a relationship with our counterparts at the city council level and building trust. And I think that's something that our community needs to know that we can do, that we can ask the tough questions, but with our eyes on the prize, and that's a better outcome for our kids. So it's process, but it's also a relationship. And I wish we could have everyone at the table to see that the questions being asked are fair, all focused on the children, and, and that's our goal to make sure that that continues to happen.
And I, I think I'll just add that, you know, bringing into the discussion poverty, because poverty is not a one-dimensional issue. And so I've been really pleased about the conversations about how we can work together to provide those wraparound services that everyone talks about by either city's resources or school resources or a combination.
And, and I think it's, in addition to piggyback on that, it's poverty, but it's also trauma, it's about equitable treatment of all our schools. Those are the themes that our board, even in thirty-two-plus days that we've had together, and themes that we have taken back to the compact team. And I, and it's clear that they remain a priority with the mayor's office and the city council.
Thank you both for your work, and we are looking forward to further discussion and providing input to make this process successful for the children that we serve. And I'm kind of backtracking, the governance training, the board members attended governance training on the twenty-first of January. One thing is for, we agreed to from the very beginning to start governance training to truly understand our roles and responsibilities as a board member. So on the twenty-first, we traveled to Charlottesville for the BSB governance training. And so in that Saturday morning discussion, the board members, we had facilitators, Jenna Patterson, the executive director of the Virginia School Board Association, provided intensive training, understanding for board members, and also we discussed board norms. So it was, it was a very healthy, we had a very healthy discussion, and it was very productive. So I would say that was our second professional development. And we are planning to go again to set the board's goals and priorities so that we can move this district forward. Any other comments on board members regarding governance training? Next item?
The next item is six point zero one, discuss the superintendent's two thousand eighteen estimated needs and two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two CFP budgets.
Board members, we can move down. Wait, wait. Hold on, hold on. Board members, we have some additional items that we need to complete. So if it's your pleasure, we can cover those items, finish those before we move down, move on, down on the floor.
That's good.
So what is your pleasure? Okay.
Okay, so then the next item would be six point zero two, receive budget transfers. Six point zero two is to receive budget transfers.
As I said, we're a little bit out of sequence with this particular item. We have a brief discussion prepared to talk about this transfer, which is five and a half million dollars to cover the shortfall for transportation. We certainly can talk, it's part of our, our presentation, we expected we would have that discussion before we voted on the transfer. So I'll look to the chair and the board if you want to stay the course acting on this transfer. We'll come back and give you some more explanation. What I can share with you is, this is a transfer that we, we really don't have any choice in making. When the budget for this year was approved by city council by major category, there was not enough funding included in the transportation function to get through the remainder of the year. So this is a transfer that needs to go in front of city council this month, and we, we'd like to have this discussion with you tonight and ask for your approval.
Mr. Ballmer?
Mr. Myers, just for my own edification, in years past, we would not have to go before city council, correct?
Yes, sir, that's right. This is a different year.
And what, what is, what's the consequence if we don't act expeditiously to approve this transfer?
You all may remember that the first budget discussion we had this year, we referenced code sections of the Code of Virginia. One of them references that if the, the local governing body appropriates our budget by major functional category as determined by the Virginia Department of Education, we cannot overspend any of those categories, transportation being one of them.
So you're saying we wouldn't have transportation for the kids?
Well, I certainly don't want to say that, but, but our, our choice would be a difficult one, that we wouldn't transport, or we'd be in violation of the Code of Virginia because we overspent the budget.
Mr. Young?
I could offer. I'll reserve inquiry for later.
I could offer a suggestion if it, if it please the board.
Go ahead, Mr. Young.
How did we arrive at this place?
This was a, an item that was negotiated prior to the, the current staff that's in place today, is the best way to say that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballmer, can you?
Just to add a little bit more context to this, this is one of, this was one of the major items that we attempted to convince city council last year during the budget process that was not the best course of action for us because of, of this particular scenario which we forewarned them about, which is, you're, you're, we have basically been put in between a rock and a hard place where we're, we've been underfunded in these, in these critical areas, and we've been able to make it work because of our vacancy and turnover savings. But we, we run the risk of finding ourselves in a situation like this where we're up against the wall about to, we're at a point where we would normally do that at a normal course, but now we have to go through the extra steps of going to council, well, actually, we probably need to go to the mayor, because the mayor's the only one that can introduce a budget amendment. And then he has to submit that to council, it has to go to committee, it has to come back to the full council for approval, so that's about a thirty-day process. And hopefully during this budget process, we can undo that, because except for this year, we've been able to do, manage our own money. And now we have to add, have the added step of going to council to do what I think all city councils, all city agencies have the ability to do anyway, which is they get a lump sum, and, and I believe they can move it around within their bottom-line budget. So.
Mr. Young?
Mr. Young?
I guess, I appreciate that, Mr. Ballmer. I guess my question regard, regarded less about the appropriation of categories and regarded more how we like spend money in excess so significantly than what we budgeted for, or what we presented to city council specifically for transportation.
It may help. The presentation that we have for you tonight gives a history of the budget versus the actual spending for transportation for the last four or five years, also the budget versus the vacancy savings in our instruction category over the last four or five years. So this is not a new item. It has become a larger item that needs attention, but, but this has been an issue that has needed to be addressed for, for a while. However, there are ways to address this. Without the visual, I'll try to explain the best I can. If we added money to the transportation budget, let's say we did, and we, now we have enough money to cover transportation, we know that right now we're going to have a number of vacancies all year long. We don't know exactly which vacancies they are. So if we added money to the transportation budget, we would still have the savings in the instruction side. That money would fall to fund balance and in essence go back to the city, unless they allow us to keep it. So the way this has been managed is the acceptance that we do have vacancies and we do have turnover savings. So we have used those budgetary savings to cover this transportation. This year, as Mr. Ballmer said, is different because now we have to go to city council because of our categorical appropriations.
Thank you.
So we, if it's the board's pleasure, we need a motion?
I don't know if it's a pleasure, but it sounds like you have, it's an obligation. There's no question you're doing this.
Yes, it's a must.
Is it already written down? Can I just move to accept the recommendation of Mr. Myers?
Budget transfer.
To approve the budget transfer. I said, I move to accept the recommendation of Mr. Myers to approve the budget transfer as city council.
So it's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Mr. Ballmer. Any discussion?
Brief inquiry, I'm sorry. These are monies we've already spent, or these are, these are dollars that have yet to be spent, or both?
We have spent some of the, of the allocation, some of the budget appropriation. No, sir, this would be a whole different discussion if we'd already overspent that category. So no, sir, we have not overspent it at this point. But, but we do have about a month-long process for first read, we have to go through the mayor and the administrative office, first read at city council, finance committee of city council, and then the second meeting of city council to ask for their approval. So it's about a month-long process.
And if I'm.
Mr. Young?
If I may, it's probably unrealistic for the balance of this year for, for the administration to, and for this board, and for our parents to be prepared to, be prepared for new transport, transportation options. In other words, it is what it is for this current school year, is that fair?
For the year that we're in, between now and June? Yes, sir, I would think that's a fair statement.
Any other questions, discussion? Dr. Feden?
To the comment about new transportation options, that was a big part of the board, last board approval to go to a hub system because of this reoccurring issue that we've had. These are what you've represented earlier, there's a structural deficiencies in the budget. We, for instance, give door-to-door service after, after-school activities, like when students come home from a football game, we actually take them to their house, those types of things. And a lot of jurisdictions don't do that. And this has been, as Mr. Myers said, typically an area that has not had the true funding to sustain that model. And so it's been dependent, as Mr. Ballmer said, on savings from other areas. As I shared last week, that if we ever are successful, for instance, we have about fifty-one vacancies filling all of our vacancies, and then you have lapses where there are people who come and go throughout the year. If we didn't have that, we would not have a place to fund this. It is a structural deficiency that each year we continue to ask for the true cost. It is not something that has ever been able to be allocated at the true cost. And so the first, last year, there was some tough decisions about changing the model to try to contain some of that cost. It took a big chunk out. That number would actually be larger now, had some of those changes, I believe, been made last year. And so it was a first step without negatively impacting our children to the extent that we are saying basically your socioeconomic status means you can't participate in something has been the challenge. has been the challenge. So that's just a little bit of context.
Hard question?
The motion was made by Ms. Bourne, seconded by Mr. Bourne to accept the recommendation to approve the budget transfer. Ms. Dor.
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is to receive for action, human resources actions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Dr. Bedden and board members. The HR actions for this evening are as follows. The nomination of 21 employees and the change of contract of five employees. As an addendum, which you received, the nomination of seven employees.
Do we have any questions? If there are no questions, then we can... Motion, we need a motion.
I submit a motion to approve the HR actions. And the amendment?
It's been moved by Ms. Dor and seconded by Mr. Bourne to approve HR action and addenda. Any discussion?
The motion was made by Ms. Dor, seconded by Mr. Bourne to approve HR actions with the addendum. Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is to receive for actions for more travel and district activity requests. And we have one request this evening, and that is from Ms. Owen, who's requesting to go to the superintendent's evaluation workshop through the SBA in Charlottesville. And I believe that is in February?
Yes.
February 27th. That's all the requests we have to see.
Need a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Bourne and seconded by Dr. Sapini. Any discussion? Hard question?
Motion was made by Mr. Bourne and seconded by Dr. Sapini to approve Ms. Owen's request for travel. Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is to approve the minutes of January 12, 2017 budget work session, the January 17, 2017 school meeting, and the January 23 budget work session. Those were submitted to you earlier for your review, and they are also on board tabs.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? Yes, the minutes approved as received.
The next item is new business.
Says there's no new business, so we can go downstairs? I mean, okay, they are front.
Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think we're two. One, two, one, two. Ready to get started again? How about there?
Mr. May.
Yes, ma'am.
We're ready.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to go through the agenda in, in just one second, but I did want to put something up on the screen that we'll come back to a little bit later. A suggestion was made, and it was, I think it was a continuation from something we talked about several meetings ago. Was there a way for us to take a look at our budget sorted by these functional areas as Bellwether had taken a look? And we were able to do that, so we're going to come back to that a little bit later on tonight. But as we get started, I would like to work through the agenda, make sure we're going to talk about what the board wants to talk about, and then work through, work through that agenda. So if you would change that for me. Okay. So what we have planned for tonight, where we left off last week, we said that we would come back, work through the items that were in the superintendent's estimate of needs. We'd go through the three remaining items, professional development, our academic improvement plan assessment analysts, and our system operators, data processing folks. And then try to see where we stand with regard to the board's support for the items that have been suggested by the superintendent. Then there's a lot of information about how we dig deeper into our budget and how we can all, how you guys can ask more detailed questions and how we can more accurately respond to the information you'd like to have. We were going to talk about a date or multiple dates for another meeting, but I think we've reached some consensus that, that that meeting is going to be next Monday night. And we'll, we'll work on a location over the next couple of days. Okay, great. With that as a backdrop, go ahead and put up the worksheet. As I was passing those out, Ms. Dor asked a good question. In what you have, we have already adjusted for the relatively small modifications by both the House and Senate versions of the budget. Actually, the, the estimate now goes back to what we originally thought before a few hundred thousand dollar reduction. So what I'd like to talk through and see where the board would like to start tonight. We talked about our requirements, and I'm going to go as fast or as slow as the board would like. These are, are our benefit requirements, retirement system, and health insurance. We talked about 4.4 million, and the board seems supportive of, of that 4.4 million. The second large item is year two of the teacher decompression scale. That would be in year two, just under $5 million at this point, salary and benefits of 9.3 million. The next item is a, a request to increase our unified pay scale. This is everybody that's not on the teacher's scale by two and a half percent to reflect the rate of inflation that our raise has not been able to keep up with for the last two years. This also would make us compliant with the state funding at this moment. So I'm going to pause for just a second. Salary and benefits at this moment, you can see is roughly 10 and a half million dollars. And I'll pause and see if there's any additional discussion that the board would like to have about these items. Great. We'll move on. The next, these are our fiscal 18 requests. These are for expansion of our multicultural center. We had a tremendous amount of discussion. We actually had somebody come forward tonight in support of the multicultural center. This is for our 11-month counselor, our office person, and our data entry when folk, when folks show up at, at the multicultural center. This will also help the workload out at the schools. The next major initiative was providing a nurse in every school. Later in the discussion today, we'll talk about some potential options for collaboration with the city, and that's certainly an, an area that we can talk about. We do receive about $2 million of state funding to support, to support our nurses. The next category was five positions to expand our Spanish and American Sign Language. Next to expand our gifted program with Mandarin, and then additional four positions to try to, to try to have our middle schoolers more committed to band and chorus. And I'll, again, I'll pause. You'll see another 1.7 million dollars and a total of 27 positions. And I'm moving through these pretty quickly because at, at this point, the, the board, I thought, had reached consensus last week, so I don't want to belabor this, and I want to talk about the things that you guys want to talk about. It's roughly 250,000, and because it's not a recurring cost, we just didn't put it on the sheet, but it would require that we would partner with the private sector, try to partner with the city and other partners for that one-time upfront cost. Yes, ma'am?
So you're assuming that we would not advance that, it would come from the private sector?
We're, yes, ma'am, we're assuming that our, our only cost would be the 331,000.
So we don't get that, how would that be?
Well, you know, obviously, there are always fallback positions. One, something we don't do a lot of, you could appropriate some of this year-end savings that you just agreed to, to, to pay for the, for the transportation cost. You could do that. Certainly, our first choice would be to partner with the private sector and, and other agencies. So a brief discussion about middle school athletics, but I, I believe that that was also approved by, by the board, or consensus reached by the board. These next items under this 2017 heading, the foreign language, these are part-time salaries. We are already paying this bill. We are already paying for these people, so this is stabilizing our budget. Same thing with these exceptional education costs. We are already paying these costs, but the, these are items that we are covering through this instructional savings, through turnover. Another 2.7 million, just scroll down just a little bit. Keep going. And then the items from two, keep going, from 2016, from the academic improvement plan, and we've had a, a pretty significant amount of discussion about these. This does not include professional development or the assessment analyst.
So I'm sorry, you're going to go, you have this in Mandarin?
Yes.
How many students would be impacted by the 140,000?
We've got only two, two teachers, so, so we would have to have one that was itinerant.
So, yeah, so a teacher can have up to five sections in high school and around about 25 to, you know, 30 students, right around in there, so.
So we think there's demand for that level of?
We do. Well, yeah, so we were looking at a couple of different things there. So for the Mandarin teachers, we were specifically looking for IB, for that IB thread. For the Spanish teachers, those are for any elective, any school.
So for Mandarin, you send 100 students, 30 students?
Well, I'm sure we'd be building that, that program, so I, I would imagine somewhere between 75, 100 students to be.
So how many, do we have any Mandarin offered?
We do not.
Oh, we have, I understand that there's a demand.
There is.
In comparison to our surrounding localities, what are their demands for Mandarin? Because I know that's a popular.
Right, right. And I, and I don't want to misspeak by calling specific schools, but I know Mandarin is in the area. I can get the specific districts for you because we did look that up, but I'll get that information for you. So it is, it is on the rise, and it is in the area. And, and aside from our local, you know, the five that we usually are surround, that are surrounding us, in the IB program, it is a national drive.
So at high school level for IB, how many students make up?
It's on our academic improvement plan. I think we have about 350-some students.
So that one teacher possibly?
And so we'd be building that, so we would use with our middle school, remember, we have Brown as part of that, as well as our high school. In fact, I just left a district where I started it at the elementary level so that students could matriculate through. So as soon as we get the middle school going and the high school going, we could certainly backtrack. What we could do is we could have some after-school enrichment at the elementary level just to get them started.
Thank you.
If we're ready, we'll continue on, again, the 2017 requests. These are items that are already, we are already providing the service in our budget, so this would stabilize our budget. And then the 2016 requests are all academic improvement plan exclusive of professional development and the assessment analyst. So if you'll scroll down a little. More is, do we want to talk about the academic improvement plan?
So, um, is this 2017?
No, go back up just a little bit further. Right there. These are our, our part-time foreign, elementary foreign language folks, and we are already paying this. And also these exceptional education services, we are paying for them as well. So this would help the, the stress that's on that, that vacancy savings, this would help that. And, and not to, to jump too quickly ahead, but I really did want to get down to a total. At this moment, the total that's in front of the board to see if we, if we agree is just under 16.9 million dollars. We have adjusted the state estimate for, we don't want the House or Senate version, it's going to go through, but both of them yield almost the same thing. So at this moment, before we consider these other three items, the funding request to the city would be an additional 12.4 million dollars. So I wanted to kind of put a frame there and say to the board, this is our first time through this together, and obviously, it's important to work together with the mayor and city council. We, we don't know, at least I don't know, where they are at this moment with, with regard to additional funding that's available for the city as a whole, how they would allocate any of those additional funds for education. We don't know that at this moment, and it, it's difficult to talk about, are we supportive of these items when we haven't talked about, are these the highest priority items in the whole school division? Or should we, should we prioritize these over something else? But I, I do want to, for us all to remember that the, the recommendation that has come forth from the superintendent is not to eliminate items at this moment other than this 1.5 million dollars. But it is a request for additional funding, so these are new, new requests. So I kind of want to pause here and see where that, and I'll, I'll offer a couple of suggestions, see where the board would like to go. One place we can go is we talked about additional discussion about professional development, the assessment analyst, and the system operators. We can go there, we can pause here. We also have, we put together a lot of information about how we can dig deeper into our existing budget if the board is, is not ready to make a commitment at this, at this moment for these particular items. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So if you want to respond to those questions and?
Yes, ma'am, I would. If you'll scroll up a little bit. I'm, I'm going to show you those remaining additional items. If you scroll up a little bit, I'm gonna show you those remaining additional items. The remaining additional items on this, keep going, keep going. Scroll back up just a little bit. So these are the three items. Our system operators, ten of them, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Our professional development, there were four options. And then our academic improvement plan, instructional assessment analysts, four of them. Now if you go to the other.
These are the two documents that were provided in the weekly report. The board's information, try to capture the, what was to be accomplished, the work these individuals would be doing, examples of how it would look, and actually the hiring and process. Notes that it could mean that some people could be displaced, certainly at the end of it. And what we tried to stress last week was that this is, these are critical positions for secondary schools that Richmond has not had for some years. We, if you look at the special description, the job description alone is a very different job description than you might see for any of our office associates. And it would require skills that some might have, as we, as you pointed out last week. But certainly, we would want, we have a very high expectation for the work these folks would be doing. Our schools are very much based on evidence, and we need good data to make that, those database decisions. And the school data information operators are going to be critical to making that work. I'd be happy to handle any questions.
This is a little unfair of a question, so I'm gonna apologize upfront. Do you think we have too much data, not enough data, or the right amount of data originating from our schools?
I think that, that question becomes very huge in a hurry, and these folks would be a piece of the data. So we have a great amount of data to make great informed decisions with. This type of data is, you know, we talk about, we want to have good information coming in, the correct information coming in. We want the addresses to be correct, the course requests to be correct, the students are being placed in the right sequence of courses. This is a different kind of data that you might think about, how do our students do on the SOL?
Well, I really appreciate the breadth of the information that you provide on the weekly report, along with the impact statement. I think it's pretty telling about what I regard as is a very important role, which is to make sure that we've got quality data so that we're in a informed data and consistent looking forward. We've been asked to look at other landlines, for example, where we are trying to collect data and analyze data to make informed decisions. And we find out that may be faulty, or it may not be as, you know, as helpful as we'd like when we go through this process. So I just want to support this landline because I think it's critical that we have comprehensive data, especially if we're looking for opportunities to assess our students other than heavily relying on standardized tests and things of that nature. So, thanks.
Document, you have actually, impact statement at the bottom of that, that has the examples in the very, very bottom. I'm fading in and out. The work that was done, you have to count to these numbers, and you see at the very bottom, is that the one around the end? Or you have the second document, one document, the impact statement? So what was done, I mentioned it again just briefly last week, ITRT's technology department went out with our face officers and basically did a really quick needs assessment, or actually pretty detailed needs assessment of all our buildings. What jobs are being performed in all of our schools by the people that are there now? And names are attached, and here's who's doing this. That's it? Oh, awesome. So go right down, all the way to the bottom, back past the examples. A must, it's underneath there. It talks about based on review of current staffing at middle schools and high schools. Go to the very bottom. Yeah, it's right there, the example. Yeah, right there. So you'll see here, this is how the breakdown comes through. So what we included here was a breakdown for you showing that at Benford, there's an FTE that's present, so you post and hire, for instance, at Benford. At Bushall, there's an FTE present, you would post and hire. Some of you see it would require a new FTE. And the examples kind of break down how those would all play out. That's why we need ten FTEs for a total of fifteen schools. We would use current people, appropriate, and when they were able to read qualifications and be hired for these positions. But if not, certainly, we would have to advertise and look for quality candidates to fill these critical positions at our school.
Just a clarification, when it says new FTE, that means, because we had a conversation, maybe it was last week, about the fact that there are administrative people in offices. So, and there was some talk about, you know, is there an opportunity to potentially give those folks extra training to be able to perform this job? So I'm just trying to?
If you see new FTE, that would mean that the job analysis of the administrative assistants at Brown Middle School up there, the third one there, versus the person? New FTE, that means they would, and I don't know off the top of my head right now how many office associates they have. We'll say they have two. So our analysis shows they need three office associates, so they would need a new person would be moving into that school to do the work. It could be one of the, if there's two people there now, one of them becomes the SDIA, that would be perfectly possible. And then they would have, they'd need to find another vacancy. But that's the way, that's the way you read these is, if it says new FTE like Henderson, that would mean they don't have enough people there now to do the work that's required. So we designate a new FTE position for the SDIA, and you keep your other office associates.
But there is someone doing the data entry, just not well, right now.
You've got pieces, pieces of the job are being done by all the folks in those situations.
Okay, let me explain in layman's terms what's happening. In the past, we have some office associates, one associate, two, and been in the district for over twenty, thirty years. And when they first came here, the job description was to answer the phone, meet the kids, meet the students coming in, talk to and greet the parents. Any registration was all done by paper. Well, fast forward to now, we have a student information system to maintain and also to be in compliance with state, local, and federal guidelines to keep track of not only attendance, discipline, grades, SOL course, any type of planning, future planning for the students. And all of that's captured on the system, student information system. So we had these individuals who their job description was to answer the phone and to greet parents and to help the students along. Now all of a sudden, we put technology in front of them, said, okay, by the way, we want you to continue to answer the phone. We want you to still answer to the parents that are coming into the building and also help out anywhere else you can. But in the meantime, we need to make sure you input accurate data, such as student address, keeping the student address maintained, keeping the student's phone number maintained, making sure that the students receive the adequate information so that they have the correct information as far as the, what they're allergic to on the student information system, to make sure that they keep accurate addresses and phone numbers. Right now, we fall into a real problem where we have an automated system that dials telephone numbers to parents who don't even, students don't even attend the Richmond Public Schools. But however, because the data's on the system isn't correct, the robot will call, will call, and continue to call them. Of course, that would get parents upset. Also, when you're trying to keep track of students, or if they haven't come to school, they have poor attendance, you try to go to their address. Excuse me, by law, we're required to make home visits. Well, a lot of times, because the data on the system is not correct, meaning that they have an address on the system, and then you have a Facebook goes out there and it's a vacant lot, then of course, then we have to go and backtrack to find it. Okay, why on the system that you have one, two, three, Brown Street, when that's not, that's not your actual physical address? So then what happens is that you go back and you have to track, put in the correct information for the addresses for the actual students. Not only before keeping track of the addresses, but when we send things home to the students, such as report cards, any type of report documents, we get a slew of returned data just for the simple fact that the address of the students is not correct on the, on the system. So this is a very important role that has not been existed before. The reason why we have to have some people that do an okay job better than others is in essence, we have a lot of people that's been in the system for over thirty years doing the same job. And then we put technology in front of them, and we expect them to do a great job.
Mr. Jeffers, what would the process look like if we were to hire these persons? How do those persons acquire the information that Mr. Gardner just spoke to? So if one person's responsible for all the data entry, the addresses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, who collects that information? How's that, how's that information provided to that, to that person? Where I'm going with this is, tell me I'm wrong, that the work isn't going to be duplicated. In other words, one person is going to be standing, having a conversation with mom at the desk, and she's writing on a piece of paper that, oh, no, your address, my address is now this. Then that information's going to be provided to somebody, provided to somebody else, who's then going to take that and then enter it into the computer rather than one person?
We can lay your ears on that one.
Entering right into the computer when mom says, oh, no, no, my, my address is now this, and that person at the terminal right there. So in other words, my question is, how do you, how do you eliminate duplication of effort? And we don't become a Henry Ford assembly line, and one person's collecting the information only to provide it to somebody else that's entering it?
So this, this would be new, and currently, there's only one or two people that have the access to change addresses. So to speak to the address piece particularly, you have to have, not every counselor, for instance, can change a student's address because I need address verification, so there are certain documents that you have to be trained. Which documents do I need to review to verify that, yes, you do in fact reside at this address? And once I've verified that, then I can, can change the system. And only a couple of people in the school have that access to do that. So the, the student data information system would be the person that would have that access. Normally, what you do, this person's an eleven-month contract, so they would be coming in in August. They would be performing the work in, you know, a lot of summer registrations come in, so let's get everything correct during that month of August, have those conferences. This would be a person who would be sitting down to process those parents coming in as a part of that process. Talked about last week, this is a critical piece that this, this person should be able to perform, that currently our school counselors are trying to fill those roles, but we do get a lot more piecemeal. This gets one uniformed person handling all this critical data and handling it appropriately. So this would not be a duplication of work.
Also, we need to add that on the next year, we're rolling out online registration for the parents. So the parents will register their students online, and then it's an automatic feed to the student information system assignment, which will have an address correction, address verification. So that, as Mr. Jeffers said, this is a brand-new position. And so the people who used to do some of the job, they will go and do other things in the school building. And this person will be solely responsible for input and keep track of student data. If you go to those school districts, you should try to come to school late, you go to a totally different office where they have a tennis worker there, a sis hour worker there, and all they can do is maintain and keep track of student information for the students' form of assessment.
Would, would you prefer to talk about the assessment analysts or professional development?
So last time we met, you said that you had some questions, and I just want to check to be sure that there is not something specific that I might be able to respond to first. What we've done was we included for you a job description for that assessment analyst. We have five at the high school level, we currently have three that are split among seven middle schools. And as you know, the academic improvement plan asks that we break up, that we put the last four on for last year, wasn't approved for funding, and so we're bringing it back again. So was there a specific question, if there was some clarity that I might be able to lend to what you've already been told? So it supports the testing coordinator for the schools, right, so for middle schools. So right now, we do, like I said, we have five at high school, we have three currently at the middle school, split among seven. And this would round out the additional four so that every middle school could be supported. So right now, the three that we have are doing two plus on their caseload, supporting standardized testing, whether it is that we're talking about SOLs or alternative assessments. At the high school level, certainly, they support the additional assessments for AP and SAT and PSAT. So they, but these folks are not just technical. These folks have been teachers, they have been school counselors, they feed into our assistant principal pool. So these folks are skilled with instruction. So they lead schools in helping them to understand their data and then to make decisions about what to do next. So they lead schools in helping them to understand their data and then to make decisions about what to do next. After they have gathered and analyzed their data to improve school, uh, student outcome, student performance. So they work with school leadership teams, they work hand in hand with teachers, classroom teachers. Yes. So they would also, and, and it is noted in, um, the document that I see some of you have in your hand. It's, um, noted that that would help to relieve some of that, uh, testing responsibility from school counselors. So we can, uh, start to get them back on track to serve at sixty percent of their time doing council work.
I don't know if this is a question, it's just my, I, I just want to go to the record again, where my concern is that we're building a lot of administrative and supportive roles. And what the real need to be is to invest in the teachers. And, and to put more teachers in the classroom, teachers who are licensed, teachers who have fewer children to focus on it. And so that's, I, it's not that I don't understand the need for data and support, but if we're having to make tough choices. It seems to me an academic improvement plan would include introducing more teachers in the classroom. And maybe I'm making it too simple, quality teachers in the classroom. So I understand that, and so you're saying there's an instructional component, but they're not directly interacting with the kids, is what you're saying?
No, they are coaching teachers, they're working with teachers, so they're not teaching children, but they're working with the teachers. What I can say to you is that, uh, and, and you probably have heard this several times before, so I apologize if I'm being redundant. But, you know, some time ago, this district had, uh, nearly been gutted for their, their central office support. So this just really scratches the surface of getting back to helping teachers understand what it is that they need to do to change outcomes for students. So while they are not teachers, they have been teachers. And they work with teachers one-on-one, in groups, and they do professional development as well, um, at the schoolhouse. To help teachers understand, I'm looking at my data, how do I decide which student should be in what intervention? How do I monitor that data? When do I move students from one intervention to another intervention? What are some appropriate criteria for tiering of students? So they are helping definitely firsthand with that type of, with that type of support. They, well, they're out in the schools. They come together to meet, you know, so that they, they have a, a, a director. So the assessment, uh, literacy and research director leads that group along with the data and testing, um, manager. And they lead that group to ensure that they have continuous professional development so that they're using the best skills to support teachers.
Just a real quick question. On average, in a week, how much time does a teacher spend collecting, analyzing, providing data?
Well, data comes in all forms, so I would expect that a teacher is looking at some type of data every day. Because every day, adjustments need to be made for instruction. So whether we're talking about anecdotal data, or whether we're talking about numerical testing data, or exit tickets, or whatever it is. I would expect that they're looking at data every day. Still, I would, my response would still be the same, I would expect that they're looking at some type of data every day.
Not to belate the point, but. Eliminating, currently, you said some of these responsibilities are now being completed or done by the couns, school counselors.
That is correct.
So school counselors, their role are to do what?
In terms of testing?
Testing, um, career counseling, academic.
Absolutely, so school counselors should be doing academic planning with students. They should be doing some small group counseling. Um, they should be able to work with families in addition to students. They should be helping students to develop their career pathways. They should be counseling students into particular programs if students have an affinity for that. So they should be, they should be working with trauma-informed care, with teachers, they should be doing all of those things.
So in a, excuse me, in accordance to the American School Counselor Association, the ASCA model, um. Counselors have been focusing a lot on testing.
Right.
As opposed to.
As opposed to counseling duties, absolutely. Um, in this district, because, uh, we have really, we've been gutted, there is no one to do that work. So in order for the work to get done and to assist with scheduling students and to assist with organizing and administering, um, testing. Counselors have been tasked with that responsibility. So this would relieve some of that. Our counselors and our administrators met this, uh, past fall in December, I believe it was, with V D O E. We had half days worth of work with them. And we understand what counselors are supposed to be doing, of course, the percentage of time that they ought to be doing it. And our, we are tasked with finding a way to get them back to what they're supposed to be doing. Because we are found out of compliance in that area.
So, so we'd like to.
We have one more item, but, but I would like, I, I, I hope this will help the board as, I, I can see that, that we're, we're all struggling with maybe how big this number is getting and, you know, are these the highest priorities or not the highest priorities? As we go forward and work with the, the mayor and the education compact, there will be a very defined point where, where you will decide if the, if there's not funding for all of these that you're supportive of. Um, when does that prioritization start? So we're, we're still working through, are these items, uh, things that you feel are important to the school system? Um, not that they're the most important to the school system. Clearly they aren't, because these that we're talking about now were introduced in fiscal sixteen. So other things have come on board in seventeen and, and salaries and benefits are still a higher priority in eighteen than these items. So this discussion i- is just beginning. So it, once we see what happens with the discussion with the mayor and his team and some of the administrative folks. Um, there will be a lot more discussion a- about what the, our final budget looks like.
I think, I think that what we are being encouraged to do through the compact though, is try and make some of these prioritization choices now as opposed to later. So I think that's a little bit of the conflict and it's growing pains.
So, so we have one more item that the board wanted to come back and have some more discussion, I'm so sorry.
I just wanted to say one more thing again, it's not that I don't understand the need to support the counselors. And the administration provides that support. But our goal at the highest level is to see an academic improvement in our kids. And to me, that's an investment in curriculum and new methods of teaching and increasing the number of teachers that are available, reducing the class size. And that's, so I'm, I'm just asking for you to help me understand how this will directly impact our graduation rates and the performance of our kids.
So, and, and I do hear your struggle. One thing I'd like to just remind you of is that we're a district with most of our schools in some form of school improvement. And while testing is not the only thing, and while data is certainly not the only thing that we use to really measure the progress of a school, it is significant. The amount of data that is required, not that we choose, but that is required of this school district to submit to V D O E. Because that's the requirement, is massive. And it takes several hands to not only compile that data, but to analyze that data in any way that's going to be remotely effective in moving students. So while these folks are not directly working to teach students, they directly impact our ability to submit data on time, to collect data, to meet with teachers, to understand what to do with data. So all you have to do is look at our, look at our accreditation list, look at our scores, and think about what support it is that we might need to help change that. Every support position isn't, you know, reducing class size, it isn't, you know, at those that you mentioned. But that doesn't make it any less significant. And this is support that some schools are already receiving, and it's making a difference there. Um, but we are really, really stretched because at the middle school level, there are more schools with less people to support that work.
And teachers and counselors would have to do that, do this work if we didn't.
And, and what I can say to, yes, and what I can say to you and administrators. And what I can say to you also is that when there are not as many skilled hands to help them through it and understand what to do. We will continue to get the, uh, marginal increases that we get.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna table this one for right now and, and if it's a board's pleasure, we'll move on and have some more discussion about professional development. Um, last week there were four options. Professional development as well? Oh, okay. Uh, could, could we share some, just briefly show you what we have for you? Um, and we'll, we'll go through this literally in less than five minutes. Oh, yes, the four options. Um, this is completely new information, there, there are two presentations that you're going to get. Um, and we, we, we won't really go through it, uh, but I will, I will explain. Um, as you look through these, um, we go to the, the presentation, not the big report. Um, we referenced, uh, the Bellwether Report and how we could go in and evaluate our budget based on function. And, um, what this is, is our budget and all of our people, uh, by name, by school, by department, that's broken out into these categories. So if you want to see who our teachers are in classroom instruction, who our instructional support is, what those departments are. This is listed, um, by the way that we manage the school division. Uh, so we're hopeful that this will help, if you go to the other presentation. That, that report, we had, don't have, didn't make a copy of that, it's, it's two hundred pages long. The, the, the presentation, you do have a copy of, what's in there? We, we separated all of our schools again, so you could see the comparison by school, which ones are staffed at a lower ratio than others. Which ones have a higher cost per student. You'll see across the board that our, our smaller schools cost more per student than our larger schools. So what we're hoping is that as you have a chance to look through this information, and we'll send it out to you first thing in the morning. Um, that as you want to ha- ask detailed questions about the school division, that this will help you see how we budget. That there, it is, it's not this big magic box, it's a very prescribed process of how we budget. Um, as a, I, I will, if we do go to the elementary slide quickly. It's about number eight or so. So go back. So for example, um, elementary, middle and high schools, albeit at the secondary level, it becomes a little more convoluted. Uh, this is our staffing model for elementary schools. You'll see it's pretty straightforward. And you'll see the note on the bottom that talks about the, the number and composition of our teachers and instructional aids are, is driven, uh, by, by our students. Um, if you go to the very next one. And for us, we choose to, to accept the kindergarten through third grade class size staffing standards. And we accept that six million dollars. So this tells us what size, both average and maximum class size, our elementary schools are going to be. Aside from this, we allocate instructional supplies, uh, by student, a hundred dollars per student and an extra hundred dollars for every special ed student. So that's how we budget the schools. And if you take a look at what's in this presentation, it, I hope that it makes things a, a lot clearer about where the other dollars that we spend are. And they're going to be obviously an instructional support, that's very clear to see, operations, finance, administration, uh, for the school board and superintendent. So, um, and you'll receive this tomorrow morning, uh, if you have a chance to look at it. We'll certainly be prepared for next Monday to have a continued discussion. But, um, I think Ms. Dorr opened, opened this discussion about how can we have a deeper dive into the two hundred and eighty million. Uh, we think that this will provide that, that avenue for us to have a much more detailed discussion.
I just want to thank, thank you for putting this information together in such a short amount of time. I think what would be helpful for us, because we really only have ten days and, and maybe one work session, is just some guidance on where we can, where we can start to look. Um, because I know, I've heard from, I'm, I'll just speak for myself, I'm not really interested in hashing over a hundred thousand dollar line items. I'd like to look at some of the big line items, you know, and see if there's anything that, you know, we want to get an update on and discuss.
We've got to gather, um, just a couple of slides of examples. These are just a few programs. So, um, what this is intended to represent is we have, uh, programs in our school system that are expensive. Certainly we talked about in Aspire last week, being tremendously expensive, students costing in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, Richmond Community Open, uh, Richmond Alternative School, and you see that the other schools will be sending kids too. Um, obviously there would, there would be some additional analytical work to talk, should we want to not participate with these programs anymore? We certainly, if it's the, if it's the pleasure of the board, uh, can look at some other alternatives. Um, but, uh, when we look at, at, at larger items, the, these are the areas that, that are, are high cost for the school system.
Yeah, I guess, I appreciate that, I mean, I'm, I don't want to cut spending to Maggie Walker, Appomattox, Open, M A B A. I'm, I'm talking about things that are not instructional, things that maybe don't direct to needing to learn, maybe don't direct to the impact instruction. Is there any, I mean, I've managed three hundred million dollar budget for big corporations, there's always something that you can find. And I think there are a lot of things in the state of needs that I want to be able to fund. And so just, is there anything we can do to help that process along?
A- a- absolutely. Um, and a three hundred and sixty million dollar budget, there are always some efficiencies you can apply. Um, and if it's, if it's the will of the board for the administration to come back with, with some suggestions, certainly that's something that we'll work on. Yes, ma'am? Please. It will come to you tomorrow morning, yes, ma'am? Uh, uh, if, if you, if you would, that would be great.
Pursuant to the personnel section two point two thirty-seven, then A one is student, and the student section two point two thirty-seven, then A two.